I don't know what you mean, but I just, yeah, I'm just.
Heavenly Father, help us to make correct decisions for the people of Alcona County, amen. A pledge of allegiance to the flag that is nice and fair to America. To the Republic of our nation, one nation under God, God, in the best hope for liberty and justice for all.
I see.
English.
That's.
Here.
Small.
Here.
Brady.
Here.
Johnston.
Here.
From an.
Yeah.
Yours.
Uh, subject to motion improvement, Mr. Marcus Sonius. Moved. Seconded. Uh, any comments, concerns? All was a favor.
Okay.
All goes, what she cares. Overcoming three minutes. And if there is anything we have any. We'll be on. First up, uh, presentation Stephanie Donkey, M S U four H.
Let me pull up my.
Come right to the, uh, forty, Mary, please.
Okay. Okay, well, maybe we're gonna do a small. Got a little technology. Okay, that's fine, we can do it this way too. It's a little bit small, guys, so I apologize for that. Uh, I'm Stephanie Donkey. For those of you that are new here, um, I'm the four H program coordinator for Alcona County. And I am here to give you guys an update. There we go. Um. Let me see if I can share this one more time. No, okay. That's fine. So it's been about a year since I have shared a four H update with everyone. Um, I believe I was here in July last year, so it's a little over a year. Um, and I just wanted to come to the board and share some of the accomplishments and programs that we have going currently and in the future with Alcona four H. Um, so first I'm going to touch on the livestock projects. Um, this is what most people think of when they hear about four H. It's a very traditional program and we have a lot of kids involved in Alcona County. These projects introduce a lot of leadership, responsibility, um, and education to their kids. So not only are they showing their animals at fair, but on the off season, they are attending meetings, different workshops to expand their knowledge on different animal species that they're not familiar with and learning how to do the best that they possibly can for the fair. We also have some really great sports programs that we run through four H. Um, our biggest ones are baseball and softball, and we have about a hundred and eighty-one youth that were enrolled this past spring. And we also have soccer. Um, we have spring soccer. This year we did not, because we did not have enough youth to participate, but we definitely made up for that in fall soccer with a hundred and three kids signed up as of today. Um, their season starts this week and their first game is Saturday and everyone is pretty excited. We also have shooting sports. Um, I'm happy to share that this gets its own slide this year because we expanded our group to archery. So we have not had an archery meet since around COVID twenty twenty-one, um, since I um, started this position in June of twenty-three. I've been working on getting the group back together, getting the right location and getting the instructors to help out with this. So this year we had it open to fourteen participants and so we had a full, um, club and we had Ford certified archery instructors. And we also have our four H hot shots club and that is a shotgun club where they do skeet and trap shooting. Um, they go to the Michigan State, um, shooting sports tournament and this year their team placed first in the team category and their other team placed tied for third, and this is the first year that both teams have made it in the top three. For the individual results, we had, um, a couple of kids compete in our senior skeet division. Jacob June took home second place and then for the junior skeet division, Blaine Deller took second place and Christopher Kuhn took third place. We also have a lot of camp and statewide events. Um, this gives youth the opportunity to expand their interests and knowledge beyond Alcona County. Um, this gives them opportunity to meet new people, create new friendships. Um, this year we had a youth member attend the Michigan four H horse show. Um, this is pretty big because our horse program, we have a lot of horses around, we have a lot of kids interested in horses, but our program has been a little slow to start. So this is a great step in that direction. We also had youth attend Okiak summer camp up in Prestille. County, it's a three-day, two-night camp for youth eight, youth ages eight to twelve years old. Um, up there in the yellow t-shirts is our group pitcher from Alcona. Um, they, the Alcona kids also meet kids from Alpena, Montmorency and Prestille counties and we have total about eighty kids total there. And then we had a few youth attend four H exploration days. This is a campus event at MSU. It's, they like to promote it as a pre-college event because youth get to select sessions that they want to attend. Um, they're there for three days and two nights and those two nights they stay in the dorms and they get free time to just explore campus and meet new people. And then, like I said in the last slide, we had, um, youth going to the Michigan four H shooting sports tournament and they were very successful. One of our newer events is our four H discovery day. Last year when I was here in beginning of July, um, it did not happen yet. It was in the end of July, so I'm kind of giving an update on both years. Uh, we did this again this year in July and this is a new like day camp. So the youth attend this camp and it is free for them. Um, this year they were like provided a lunch and they get, take home a t-shirt and they also get to participate in different sessions that they enjoy. So in these sessions, they get to take home projects as well and these projects can be just for them to display at home or they can take them to the fair, put them in the home arts building. So some of the sessions we offered in twenty twenty-four were STEM, soccer, woodworking, sewing, camping, archery and tie dye. And this year we had some pretty cool additions to that list, including self-defense and cooking. We also are big with community partnerships. Um, some of the ones I want to highlight today, um, are our partnership with Alpena Alcona Area Credit Union. In this partnership, we go to this elementary school and we provide financial literacy lessons to youth. So these kids are playing different games, they're participating in different activities that are fun and get them thinking and learning about money. We also partner with Alcona County Library for a lot of different events. Um, lately it has been animal-focused events to get kids introduced to different animal species, expand their knowledge on how to care for them and what these animals are like to see in person. We also have a newer partnership with Northeast Michigan Family Resource Center, specifically their literacy hub and their organization focuses on youth and families in need. And through our partnership, we did one event at the Alcona County Library. We provided, um, different activities. Their, the library theme was Color This World, so we had sidewalk chalk painting. Um, they created kaleidoscopes and they did a storytime and our four H advisory board generously donated the book that they did the storytime with, so each family was able to take home a copy of that book. And then finally I put Alcona Community Schools. We continue to partner with them on a variety of events. Um, distributing free books to youth and families that attend and doing different experiments and projects with the kids at those events. So for example, in the bottom corner there, you will see a kid making invisible ink. So this was a fall theme event, so they had a different, bunch of different stamps and they got to learn how to make this project and how to take it home and do it at home. For community events, we also are trying to expand through different parts of the community. We did the Barton City Fourth of July Parade. And we were very successful. Our float received first place youth float. We also attended the Lincoln Trigger Trunk the past two years and we're excited to do that one again. And we pass out books at that event and we get a lot of interest in four H with our display. Um, we do family game night. This one we did last fall and it's a free event for families to attend. Uh, learn about four H and just play games, whether it's inside games, outside games, we have huge variety. We attend the family nights at the school and provide books and a craft. Then we did our annual volunteer, four H volunteer dinner. We did that in Mykato this year. And this is to recognize our volunteers, provide them with a dinner and awards and just have a good time appreciating all that they do. And then finally we did a four H pumpkin patch fundraiser contest. Businesses and individuals purchased blank signs and they got to decorate them however they wanted to promote their business. And they were uploaded online and the public was allowed to vote on them and at the end we had a little award ceremony and invited all of our contestants. We have the four H makerspace classroom that's still going strong. We have expanded it to after-school events, so we have four H clubs that are meeting in this space. And it gives a good community space for these groups to meet instead of meeting at leaders' houses or in locations that are not as easily available for youth. We also do in-school enrichment programs, providing STEM activities to selected youth, so teachers select kids and send them our way and we do like a hour session doing different projects. And the four H game night and four H discovery day, which I touched a little bit prior, we also use that space for. So youth support, so the main goal of our program is to support the youth. So majority of our fundraisers and funding is going straight back to them. Um, in twenty twenty-five, we awarded our scholarship, senior scholarship recipients, um, Carter Upper and Jacob June. Each of them filled out an application and received one thousand dollars towards, um, trade school or college following graduation. We also have our first book program that is continually growing. Uh, this past year we donated over four hundred bucks back to the community. And we have our annual award ceremony where we have our four H member of the year and junior four H member of the year along with county awards and project pins, where kids complete a project, write a little, um, blurb about it and we award them with a pin for their completion. And then we also provide support in general for financial barriers that are preventing youth from attending different sports um, events, so like soccer and baseball, they have a scholarship option. And then events like MSU Exploration Day, they fill out a small paper explaining why they want to attend and our council reviews it and provide them with a scholarship. So some new programs and events this, this year, um, include, we, it was my first year bringing the master stockman's class. Sorry, master stockman's test to the Alcona County Fair and this is a little different than what we're used to at the fair. Um, this test is a knowledge-based test, so it encourages kids to expand their knowledge on different animal species. So they had a paper quiz with different questions on animal care, animal breeds, um, animal showing, and then they also had to identify feed samples and animal equipment. Um, the winners receive a four H jacket that was general, generously sponsored by some local farms in the area. Um, we have a community pumpkin sign fundraiser that we ran it last year after I, um, presented here. And we are running that again this year with hopes in expanding to more businesses and families in the area. We are doing an annual animal program at the library. And we have our archery club back up and running and our horse club is now expanding, so we will be seeing more horse-related events and programs. So my last slide briefly talks about beyond Alcona four H. So our jobs are to bring four H to attention to the community, but also with my job, there's ways that we can expand past the community and our local four H program. So for example, I presented at MSU Exploration Days and at the MSU Fall Extension Conference. And through this, I brought activities that we created here in Alcona and our different programs in a variety of sessions and games for these, um, fellow professionals to learn about and bring to their communities. Um, I have also helped with BLV testing with MSU Extension and bird identification with the elementary school and both of these things allow me to expand, um, other areas of MSU Extension and bring these aspects back to the community and back to our local programs. And that's all I have. If anyone has any questions, I'm happy to try to answer. If not, thank you guys so much. And, yeah.
Uh, move on to new business, new claims.
I'd like to make a motion to approve pre-operated claims and open claims presented for payments between August twentieth and twenty-five and September second, for twenty-five for check numbers one five eight five six nine to one five eight six nine eight and E checks two seven zero seven to two seven one seven for a grand total of four hundred eighty-two thousand nine hundred twenty-three dollars and sixty-one cents.
I'll say it. Any, uh, concerns, comments? Roll call.
From an, yes, Johnston.
Yes.
Small.
Yes.
Brady.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Next is the Veteran Affairs Board Member Appointment. Um. So, dear Tony Board of Commissioners, veteran affairs board has advertised vacancy in a corner review for three weeks. We received one letter of interest, which was viewed approved. Baron, uh, Nigoyan, Robelski, for the position, are submitting this information to the Board of Commissioners for confirmation. Patrick Spine.
Is it true, replace somebody or is this?
Yes.
That is your place, yeah. Somebody facilitate us? Um, I don't think he asked me some health issues.
I'll make one thing to approve the, uh.
So.
Not ready.
For.
Who disported? Any questions or comments? Let's. Roll call.
Johnston.
Yes.
From an, yes, small.
Yes.
Ducks.
Yes.
Brady.
Yes. Finance report, um. We uh, met last week. Uh, what do you mean? When we were gone. Oh, we met, uh, Sheila and I met with the, um, library, uh, Denise yesterday to sort out some stuff and help her with that. Um. So we're kick off finance here, so I was prepared to, to go ahead and make a nomination here for, uh, position of, um, the empty position of the, uh, budget coordinating, uh, coordinator. But, uh, received some new information last night and this morning in regards to another submission or possibility for that solution. So we have three solution possibilities now and you think, I don't know if everybody see that or just, uh, I think that Craig and I have to review one of them is presented that is what you so. But we have to make a decision by next meeting period because we're getting, we're running out of time. Uh, I was ready to try to pull the trigger on this on today, but this, I can't do that respect of this latest submission, so. Um.
Now, we didn't listen to you, most of like.
I don't have an answer to that question. But it came in yesterday. So. Uh, Craig and I will personnel review that as they being, if there's wish to help commissioners, um. That's what finance, that's what I had, that's what I have to report clients, um. Other than that, uh, as soon as we get to any point, we gotta, just get the jump here and get going on the budget for twenty-six.
Chair is not receptive to a motion or?
Uh.
Chair is not receptive to an emergency bill?
The chair, um, is not boss of this committee and if everybody wants to make a motion, they go ahead and make a motion.
I move that we accept the, um, enter into an agreement as provided for, so the budget, so the agreement, um. That's what's happening with isn't twenty twenty-five.
Some of this is, that was put on the net, yeah, brings a different one. No, that's the one, no. This is the one I brought out that should go on the table here.
Who is that with? I don't have.
That's the, that's the Cheryl one that I sent everybody three, a month ago.
Cheryl.
I, I handed that away. But I, a month ago, I, uh, finance submitted this to all the commissioners. Um, I made a second for the purpose of, uh, discussion. So a month ago, um, and the thought process behind this, and like I said, I was prepared to, uh, to hold off and consider the third option, then I'll just be honest about it. Third option is that, um, the clerk's office has brought forward a, a proposition for a, adding another deputy position that would practice board. Uh, more or less a board secretary. And will handle all of the board, um, duties as far as the minutes and, uh, things like that, as well as, uh, participate as project coordinator position. Now, that being said, uh, this, uh, the one in front of you from Cheryl Franks is only until through the end of this year.
I'm assuming that that probably technically there would be till the end of the year, because there may be some activity that would be finished up in January.
Well, and, and perhaps, but my hope is that by our first session of twenty twenty-six, that we have a plan in place for a permanent solution for this. Because we, you know, kicking the can. Yeah, we can't keep doing this and, and I, I'm fully, uh, I'm fully receptive of the clerk's office option or, uh, the quote that we got from Mr. Cordis from an outside contractor standpoint.
I would like to review these a little bit better, all of them, and I would move to table at this time.
I'll support that. Motion support table.
The anybody said, uh, the third one, the caution.
The thing is, is though in the minutes on August twentieth, it does state on the finance report, the clerk's office added a deputy that would work as the board secretary and directly with finance regarding the budget. And lastly, a proposal from Nick Cordis, all that's been recognized.
True, but I didn't have the actual documentation until yesterday.
Oh, so that was a verbal.
You requested it be before this next meeting.
Correct, so I, the information, yeah, the information came in yesterday. Um, I, I'm just trying to go in the spirit of fairness.
No, I just, the way the minutes read, it sounds like you already had it.
Right.
That's what I'm just saying. I, I don't, doesn't matter to me. I just, the way it states, it sounds like you've already been informed.
So there's a motion to, uh, table till the next meeting, um. Let's have a roll call again.
Are, are we, is it? We have another two weeks that we can hold off on this or is?
Ideally, no, but yes, because two weeks is only the sixteenth, so we still have two full months until we're gonna get everything submitted to the state per dashboard.
Who was the first? Who was the second?
Karen, uh, Craig.
I would also say that, since I'm on the table inside of this, um, this is a fairly hefty ass. And a fairly, uh, important thing to do. We've got a certified, so our public accountant who's willing to do this, we have a current one who's willing to do it, and maybe the clerk to not even have it on the agenda as new business and to do and bring this up out of um, for, of a financial report is, I think is pushing it. It's a little out of, out of the ordinary. So I, I fully support the tabling, uh, for those who want to look at what the clerk is offering. If it had been in the agenda, that'd be different, but it wasn't.
Well, it didn't make it, Jennifer, well, regardless.
Yeah, yeah.
So, uh.
In our pattern.
So, yeah, I don't know, um. I, I guess I don't agree with the fact that finance can't bring itself forward.
Well, I, I'm not saying you can't, but I think it's, it's something that's more than just a minor thing. This is a that it would have, should have been an agenda item and.
So. Uh, anything else? Let's do a, a roll call then, please.
Yes.
No.
From an, no. Small.
Yes.
Brady.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes. Which I was sort of angling for anyway, so I'm not doing this in the basis. I don't agree with the path that I want, that I think is the important first take. But, um. Uh, you know, let's, have full consideration for all three options. Now that we have the document from the, uh, clerk's office, that everybody can have a look. And, uh, please put this on new business for the next meeting.
I'm finished, this.
Uh, finished business because it was table, correct. That's it for finance personnel. Craig, you want to speak to some of the stuff that you guys have been doing with the union negotiator?
So we did, we, uh, very high met with, uh, the MS, we had an initial meeting. We don't have a TA of anything yet. We need to get, know it then. Um, there's some proposals and some thoughts and ideas. As soon as we get some TAs, we'll bring them to the board and have you guys give your input on it. Um, seemed to go well, I thought it was, you know, it was no, uh, major issues. Um. That was it for the MS. I haven't heard yet from Scott. I'm, we don't have a date yet. We don't, but they're, they're retiring. Okay. So deputies, uh, unions coming to. Um, other than that, uh, we have handbook personnel meeting.
Yep. That went pretty well, I thought. We have a lot of good input and I think everybody is known as within the same, within the area of the same page anyway, so. Um, uh, they're going to, uh, uh, Trina's going to make those changes and share with everybody. I think we can just do a consent by email vote from all the other like the subjects and then we'll bring it back to here at this point. Put that out in the business for next, uh, uh, meeting.
My third world building department?
Yeah, let's do that.
So building department also has a need, uh, personnel standpoint and we had some discussions, we have some potential resolutions this morning. Um, so we have some, uh, soil erosion permit activity that was accomplished by a former employee. Uh, we no longer have anybody qualified and be able to perform those, so considered soil erosion permits. So we've had a, we have someone who was interested. Um, they're not, due to the low amount of money that's actually available for the amount of permits, they weren't really interested in paying for a liability policy and they asked if it would be, uh, well, they didn't, they asked, but we were trying to problem solve. After some calls, we found that if we made this person a temporary employee.
Temporary part-time.
Temporary part-time employee to finish out some of this work that needed to be done, our own insurance would cover the liability for them. So he wouldn't have to, to have that very, um. Um, this is just till the end of the year until we figure out, you know, what we're gonna do. We're gonna hire a new employee, if we're gonna contract, if we're gonna do, there's lots of different, um, avenues to it. So we do have a proposal. I don't, we don't have a contract yet, so.
Fan data and I would say this is a next meeting, this is informational at this point. You agree?
Yeah, other than it is another one of those, it's gotta get going because they are probably looking at an audit by Eagle because of the transition of employees or people who did it actually, so it'd be good to get some of this done. We have a letter, he, there's forty-one permits that are active that need to be closed out that he would be doing and then plus whatever new ones. That he would be doing and then plus whatever new ones come in through the end of the year. So, but yeah, we will have a contract. For services or something here by the next meeting and who's our, our time, we need data.
Oh.
Right. Yeah, yeah, it's not a contract. He's an employee, so.
Temporary part time with a start ending.
Yeah, correct.
Is this a union position?
Um, it is not going, we, we'd rather not have a union position, no. No, it is, it'd, it'd serve, well, that's where we're at, yeah, anticipation.
It had worked out the bar potentially, yeah. Temporary part time was the, was the.
So there is no qualified person to perform. Yeah, there are these in the union right now, right? And no anticipation of anything happening soon in the near future. So the alternative we have is to hire out from a different county and essentially contract. Or we hire our own person, use our own liability, who knows our, knows our stuff and do it that way.
But this does start a new conversation that we have to have about the entire building department in particular, because. As we grow into and have to get new employees to that department, as they decide, you know, they'll retire or whatever. It's gonna be harder and harder to find people that are gonna be willing to carry. The burden of a large insurance policy, that's definitely something we gotta figure out how to proceed.
And, and cost of building department inspectors are gonna. Be, that's going along with equalization, same thing. They got qualifications, certifications, all these different things that are pushing, yeah. Shrink your pool of people who can do it.
So once we get this band-aid figured out, then uh we need to, between uh personnel and ready for the building uh department, we need to start. Working on solutions for how to proceed in the future. Support, so. Anything else, personnel?
No, you can try to ask.
Treasurer's report.
Um, we have a few things. Um, our auction is today. It's online. It's live right now. It's from ten to seven P M. We have fourteen properties in auction. So after seven o'clock today, we'll see what the outcome is. Um, the only other thing I have is we sent out thirteen hundred notices, which was required um to be mailed out by September first. Due to the holiday, we mailed them out yesterday. So those notices are going out, and that's about all I have.
Thirteen hundred notices.
Uh, Delinkland, Texas.
Where's your port?
We just finished up um. What turned a, a two day jury trial turned into like a five day jury trial with half days. Um, there were a couple of very, very late nights. Um. I happen to be one of those late night people, so I took drug in the health insurance for twenty twenty six and started working on that. It's almost complete. Um. Tina's gonna work on the workers comp. It was out of whack from the beginning of the, since like May. Um, so she has the new figures and she's gonna finish budgeting out. That for the remainder of this year to make any adjustments as well as uh. The figures for twenty twenty six. So we've already started budgeting in our office for next year. Um, the jury board met and reviewed about thirteen hundred juror qualification questionnaires, so. Uh, those went into effect uh September first, so all of our new jury. Uh, people are ready to go and um, which is good, because there are a lot of upcoming jury trials scheduled. There seem to just be. More and more, um. Also, the opioid settlement, uh Carol and I have been working on that together. Um, she has submitted the paperwork online for a set of new defendants. Which there were like six or seven of the drug companies, and that was going to be an additional about fifty seven thousand dollars, I think. Uh, coming in for that settlement. And I just wanna make sure I'm putting. The handbook you said to put on the next agenda. Or do we wanna?
We don't need that for that, I'm like.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so, cause we wanna meet one more time?
Yeah, well.
Department heads?
Yeah, we should.
Okay.
And really, we don't, I mean, is there a deadline? Have that done?
No.
Yeah.
No. I mean, just because they sent the bill, that doesn't mean anything, but.
Well.
Um, I think that's about all I can think of.
Did, what did we ever decide on? Uh, waste management? Did Tom get back with you?
Uh, he emailed, I emailed it to him and apparently it didn't scan two sided. So he did respond back and um asked for the second page, so I sent that to him and it just needed his approval and um. I did not hear back from him, no.
Cause that's in September, we start paying that or?
You're getting a bill or?
It's written right on my desk. He did stop in today because his retainer agreement, he's, I needed him to sign. So he signed that, but I was in the handbook meeting, so I didn't get to get final approval on that. Waste management plan. I can just email him again. I'm sure, I, I just need a confirmation and I can send it to, um, I can't think of her name off the top of my head.
Alicia.
Our.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Yeah, cool.
Lady was here, what, last time? When she was in the trouble.
Anything else?
No.
Sheriff's port.
Yeah, Commissioner, it's been a while. Little gray reef sheriff's update for you this week. A little bit of historical contact.
No, why would Terry email?
Yeah, pass. Is it, what? Sir, we'll get Terry in there a little bit. On the twenty fifth of, of August, we had the victim services meeting at my house, and that's kind of my opportunity to thank the uh, the volunteers that helped me out. So we had the volunteers and their spouses come over for a dinner at my house, and we also had a guest speaker, Mary Shaw from Partners in Prevention. She came and spoke to us about. Uh, grief and loss and how to deal with folks who have just experienced suicide in their family or friends. Um, quite, quite an interesting conversation we had, and, and it was, it was very insightful. She had a nice job. Um. And a lot of folks shared some tragedies from the family, not necessarily suicide, but how to deal with those things. That went very well. Uh, we recently police three fatal traffic fatalities, and none of which are even closely related to each other, but the first was an ORV crash on U S Forest Service land. In the middle of nowhere, and it was hard to find, but we got it. A motorcycle versus deer resulted in a fatality, and a Jeep that overturned a Moss Lake Woods Club most recently this weekend. Uh, that's pretty busy for us. That's a, that's a pretty busy summer, along with a couple of their fatalities this year. We've been real busy all year on fatalities. We started about November of last year. Uh. With that, and like I said, none seem to be real related in the other ones, uh, no real rhyme or reason. Sunday uh was the Herschel Art Show Labor Day Parade. I had the unique opportunity of leading the parade. Which wasn't so unique, except for I had Commissioner Roman with me. She helped me lead the parade. We handed out a lot of popsicles and candy to the children. Um, it was a good time. You know, despite the efforts of some folks to, to thwart the parade here in Herschel for some reason this year, it went off very well and was very well attended and, and uh. Seemed like everybody had a real good time. By the way, we used to provide twenty four seven coverage uh for security at the art show. We haven't been able to do that for a few years now. We just don't have the personnel to do it. It was always a funded thing, because we charge the city of Herschel for the time that we spend down there, but. You know, people you can't send down there, you can't just send over bills, so. That's just that. All right, flip to the next page. You see an article there that says the sheriff may vacate the jail. Terry could probably tell you a lot more detail about how this went down, but Sheriff Shorter used to live in the jail. Uh, kitchen and building department portion of the building over there, along with his wife and children. Um, and this article describes a negotiation system for him to leave the building and, and build it somewhere else. Um. His wife Rita worked as the jail maitre, and Terry may have more insight in what she exactly did with that, but you know, meal preparation and some of the other. Activities with the prisoners was part of her job as uh. Boy from the sheriff, and coincidentally, I ran into um family members of Sheriff Shorter's at a funeral one year. Right after being appointed as undersheriff, and they asked my wife, oh no, are you gonna have to cook inmates for the prisoners? It's what she said, no, I will not be cooking for the prisoners. Um. Anyways, unfortunately, uh Rita Shorter passed away a couple of weeks ago, if you're not aware. Uh. On uh August nineteenth, she passed away. I knew both of the daughters and the son very well, but both the daughters, coincidentally, were teachers. Uh, one that I had in high school was a teacher, Elaine Coswell was a teacher with mine in Talasary High School, and her twin sister. Taught my children in Alcoa Community Schools, Bethry, uh, not really a dark, who prosecuted. But it wasn't until a few years ago I realized they were twins. I always thought there was one of them, and I always was confused why she was. So active in Talas, ended up going to community schools, and I still can't tell them apart when they come in, so. Uh, one, one, one more thing to add to that is uh their granddaughter worked for us briefly. And I'm sure that was an honor for her to work for us in the sheriff's office with, with Central Dispatch for a while. If you look closely at that photograph, you'll see the sheriff and undersheriff in there, along with five commissioners, all dressed very nicely, in sports coats and ties. And there's a young lady wearing a nice dress in the, in the picture there.
Who falls, it's like Karen.
If you look a little closer, having the caption, it is Commissioner Roman in that picture, nineteen eighty six. The only other thing I have is uh you asked me to prepare a court of security budget, which I had done. Um, and prepared, that's on the third page for you to review. Uh, one caveat to that is that I've talked to the union. Uh unofficially, they've agreed to uh. Allow an extra classification in their union, and the rates to pay would be twenty dollars an hour starting, twenty two dollars after one year for that position. And that lines up very closely with what they do for the part time uh deputies and jailers. Uh, obviously, it's a lower scale, pay scale, because they're not certified. That is my update.
Kind of training does that require?
For that?
Yeah. Grow that position.
Well, there's no required, there's no requirements for it.
Yeah.
Uh, what I would give them certainly would be some paid P escalation training, use of force training. Um, dealing with public, but also you have to get into, when we start talking about use of force, you start after talking about search and seizure and detaining people, so there's a little bit of legal updates.
No, that's.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, obviously, the, the ideal situation would be have certified police officers in there, which reviews some of the liability off the sheriff in the county. Um, because they are certified and have that training, so uh. The less training we have, the more liability associated with it.
Does he learn to carry? There you go.
You, you know what? I haven't determined that yet. Some, I have, I have one person right now that's uncertified that does carry, but is a very uh. Person I know very, very well, that I trust very well, and has had use of force training and has had firearms training. Likely not gonna be giving uh uncertified people firearms, no.
Then I have one more question.
Sure.
How was the uh. The work for the coroner response for the. Three accidents, do you have any issues?
Do you know what? It's been very well.
Good.
Yeah, the medical examiner's uh system seems to be working very well. Um, as a matter of fact, Lisa Kispert is the uh, the coordinator or administrative assistant there. I've been trying to get her to come down and talk to our victim services unit, and I'm hoping to do that next month. Uh, but, but I'm gonna tell you, I think the system's been working well, and this new company's been working fairly well for us, yeah. And uh, amazing, one quick phone call, the, the, the commissioner and I sat down and did quite a while ago, really turned out well when we did that.
Yeah, I.
Yeah.
Congratulations. Any more questions for chat?
Sheriff, the uh ORV crash on U S Forest, uh, where was that at?
Um, between Mycato, Glenny and Barton City, right, uh, just south of Reed Lake, Foot Traveler.
Okay.
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, county.
By the road?
County road, county road wise, it'd be follow the road, but it's a forest road section over in there, yeah.
The budget that you offered, how many hours is that?
That's two thousand eighty.
Pardon?
Two thousand eighty, yeah.
Okay. Let me show you. Uh, can you report? We'll start with Karen.
Move back up just a little bit.
Okay, we'll back up a little bit.
Two thousand eighty is not what. Our hours are here for, for eighteen twenty. Now, is this the extended hours? What's the county program is working or?
Yeah, I would think so. My, my folks, my folks get paid lunches. They don't, they don't get an unpaid lunch. They get a paid lunch. So I think they would certainly be working.
I just, they just asked me on.
There was also some discussion about starting it a little bit earlier, so if we were gonna offer them unpaid lunch and serve it seven thirty, then that would make that good. Yeah, appreciate the question.
Um. Definitely, you mentioned the opioid. Um, we did skip our August meeting. Uh, our next meeting will be the third Monday of September. Um. The other one thing that I do want to mention that um. The seniors center has determined that they are going to give a discount to what they have. Categorized as hometown heroes. It was ten percent off of the annual membership. And it will be for sheriff. Department, dispatch. State police. EMS, first responders, and fire personnel. Fireman and lady. All of it.
Yeah.
Um, I see you have here, uh, public notice. There was a, uh, wirelil advisory emergency session. Um, I did go to that and hailed. And what it was, was on Lake Shore Drive. They had a uh residence that has been there. They had a well they drilled about four years ago. And it, it just, it plugged with silt. There's a lot of silt in, so they. Uh, it's a different well driller moved twenty feet over, and when they hit about thirty foot. Um, they hit a flow. Um, they couldn't get it stopped. It was blowing outside the pipe, a five inch pipe. So they went and they got an eight inch plastic pipe. Um, drilled that down. It, it blew outside of the eight inch. They went and they got a hundred thirty bags of cement and pumped that down there. They don't know where that happened. So he went and bought another rig and got some ten inch pipe. And drilled that down over top and got it to stop. What, within there, and then they took and they uh ended up, they were running, they dug a pond in that person's yard. And blanked it up. Uh, they were, the well was flowing three hundred fifty gallons a minute.
Holy moly.
How much?
Three hundred fifty gallons a minute. So.
That's a two and a half inch hole, flowing pretty fast.
So obviously, that, that, the, the emergency session meeting the next morning. Um. So we came with a bunch of different uh well drillers, they all came together, and the goal is to take and pull the five and the eight inch. Don't touch the uh, the ten inch and put a steel eight inch down, pass through the well, down and flow into the clay. And then cement that between the eight and ten, and then put a powder and weld that on. And uh, they are waiting, they can't get eight inch steel pipe. Right now, it's supposed to be in any day, but in the meantime, they've got Eagle. Uh, they put a soap bag on the pipe and they're pumping it into Lake Erie.
So that was. Received by New York.
Yeah. You're training, you're in the lake, man.
Yeah, we're training something, three hundred fifty gallons a minute. So if you.
Cause I, I was at the meeting and talked about it, but if you, everybody goes west on seventy two, just past my house on the south side of the road, there's a pond out in front of that house. Same thing happened, that's six hundred fifty gallons a minute. And there's actually made a river, and if you, you'll see that anybody drives by, it's on continuously flowing, been flowing for ten years. And it will not quit. It's just, yeah, unbelievable. It'd be a mess. For their situation, it was bad because they had neighbors close by.
Well, there's neighbors, yeah.
This one was, just goes out.
Well, and they're really worried about this ten inch. It hasn't compromised outside.
Yeah.
But if, if that grows, they don't know what they're gonna do.
Well, great.
Yeah, it's a.
Anything else?
No.
Terry?
Uh, NEPCOD ended their meeting. Like everybody who was talking about it, uh, the state's a little slow in getting their budget done. Hopefully, they will get it done by the first month of November. It would give us both a chance. I attended a material management planning meeting that's went along well. I uh. Was very impressed with the group. That is the actual planning part of it. They recruited some pretty good people. Um, attended personnel with the great. Negotiations and a TB TA meeting. And uh, they seem to be all right as far as money right now. Um, but again, the state thing is really, most of everybody I'm. Sitting on a board with is very concerned about the state and how much the uh. How much they're gonna get cut or not get cut, or how, if it's gonna get shut down, or what they're gonna do. There was also that Michigan works to their same field. Everybody's worried. Right? Uh, I think that's probably it.
Terry? Uh, D H D, in addition to the well, um, there was a lengthy conversation about the appropriations. Uh, DHD, in addition to the well, um, there was a lengthy conversation about the appropriations, uh. Just conveyed back to this board, that the director and everybody in there was appreciative of our board giving. Or agreeing to a ten percent, uh, they had yet to go to Overma County, I don't know what happened, that was last weekend, and what Overma ended up doing. There's only one representative there from IASCO and. He was actually in support of the ten percent, it was the rest of the board that was not, so I don't know what's gonna happen with IASCO, we're gonna develop something. To a, a whole new policy going forward to, to address appropriations to the counties on how, what it's gonna be incrementally each year. Instead of waiting ten years and try to drop a big load on, maybe a little bit each year. Also, I think what I heard was IASCO County felt like there was a population discrepancy and. Amount per person and that, I, I didn't get the whole idea, but it was. Yeah, it was a little picky, actually, that's what it is. Um. Other than that, the, the HDA, but the NALT is going well, um. Road Commission, so they continue to struggle with re-gain employees, and they lost another one in the week, uh, last week, I was at the meeting. Um, uh, but they, their JRS gone well, I don't know if anybody's had a chance to drive around the company, but. They did a lot of steel coating, a lot of chip, chip seal, did a great job, things looked really good for what we got, so. Other than that, not just it.
Great. Number three, you mentioned yourself, but. We're turning century, it was. Um, DHHS reduced services. That did not.
Farm health, I mean, you said DHHS.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, DHD.
Oh.
Yeah, that was not discussed, uh, you know, I don't think we've gotten to that point yet, we're gonna wait, I think they're gonna wait to see what Overma does and maybe. IASCO will come to the table and, and give some peer pressure on it, if not, it's gonna be difficult. I don't know, I won't be.
And then already had fifty thousand dollar cut, they're gonna have that.
Yeah.
Cutting the budget.
I, I suggested, I think it was over the meeting, so I can say it now, I suggested that. That Denise billed them for all the PPOS consulting work she's done in IASCO County. She spent a lot of time after Congress, that, you know, wasn't really a bar. And all corner Tony and, but, be that of the, I don't think we've gotten that far yet. Hopefully cooler heads or smarter heads will prevail and they'll realize that it's probably necessary and we'll forward a bit.
Shortly after, we reduced, uh, supposed to be three representatives to.
So that was by population then?
Yeah, the base load. When they said. You don't need three representatives. It was ample.
Well, I mean, there's been a really solid investment in our community with the new offices and the home building, so they had the. It's, well, well, some money well spent here for us.
He's already carrying tight in the budget anyway, didn't she?
Oh yeah, she's already.
Way off, yeah. Yes, she's, I know she's also having problems up to the bone.
Yeah, DHO is struggling on some things too.
Yeah.
Alright, then we have our last section of public permit, five minutes.
Uh, I just wanted to give a quick IT update, um, we were. Applied for a DTMB grant for. Um, our antivirus and our managed detection response. And we were awarded sixteen grand for a two year subscription. Uh, with help of Sheila, we also applied for a homeland security grant from Melissa Upper. And were awarded to replace all the county switches, which is another sixteen grand. Uh, both will make us that much more secure. Um, kind of win-win. Uh, thanks to Sheila, I came up and I said, not sure what to do here, uh, really beneficed to, to be able to obtain these. And uh, she pointed me to Melissa Upper for the uh, homeland security grant, helped me uh, get it going, it was a. Win-win, uh, quick IT update.
Yes. Please state your name.
Um, my name's Erin Gugan. Um, I live in Alcona Township District One, I believe. Um, so I just prepared a statement, um. Please correct me if I'm wrong in any of this, uh. The motto for Alcona County is people loving people, or first of eighty-three, perhaps that's not important today. The Alcona County Building Department webpage however states that. It is dedicated to ensuring public safety in all construction and development projects within our community. Our goal is to contribute to a high standard of living for all residents of Alcona County. Alcona County has adopted and enforces the Michigan Building Code and the Michigan Residential Code. In my experience, the Alcona County Building Department enforces codes selectively. I have been trying to get a local contractor, Dave Murphy Builders. To complete work that started in twenty twenty-three. It was a relatively small job that included replacing my roof, sheathing and insulation as well as mold remediation. It was supposed to take one and a half to two days. Currently, the sheathing, ice guard and insulation have been re-replaced. As in they were replaced and now they've been re-replaced and have been dried in since July thirty-first. The damaged metal panels, they're rusted and have um, dents and everything on them. Um, and gable, okay, so the damaged metal panels and the gable and siding are laying on the ground in my driveway and yard. Significant damages have been inflicted upon my property throughout this ordeal. The latest damage being a bent electrical mast and the soffits around it. So there's hole there, oh, there's, you know, there's lots of mice and insects and everything, live in the forest, um. In the inspection, in the inspection report from Harry Harvey, it is stated that. The bathroom vent should be connected through the roof above the bathroom. This is an opinion, not a, not a reiteration of what is stated in the Michigan Residential Building Code. I spoke with Harry Harvey last week and he stated that the commissioners told him to stay out of this deal. Another inspector from Alpena was supposed to be called in to verify that the damaged metal roof panels can be reinstalled. Without compromising their functionality and longevity. But I was later told that the said inspector does not want to get involved. I also raised concerns about the insulation not being complete. And that there is wet insulation that has been sitting in my driveway for weeks that I do not want to go into my attic. Harry Harvey stated, these issues have nothing to do with him. If that is so, do these issues have anything to do with the building department? In general, or the commissioners? Just not now? Or perhaps when we need to start putting, putting the heat on, I think I, my heat already. Kicked on this year and winter is coming. Um, also, no building department or no building permit was placed on my door upon commencement of the work. On July thirty-first. Um, I visited the building department the following week and found that there is not an active permit for the work. So respectfully, I request that you, the county commissioners, investigate yourselves. And my case with the building department. You have my contact information and I welcome the opportunity to provide additional details or documentation, thank you.
Anybody else have a comment? Uh, then we are going to, do you want a short recess or do we want a closed session or go to a closed session? Wait, we're, we're gonna go into closed session now then to. For you some uh.
Motion.
I'll make a motion on a closed session. Who decided, uh, Rofo?
Small.
Yes.
Crazy.
Yes.
Brumman. Yes, Johnson.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.